Welcome back to the Putnam Valley Final Budget, Putnam Valley Board of Education Final Budget Hearing Business Meeting of May 26, 2020. Please join me as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So this is our final budget hearing. So that is our meeting for this evening. So Dr. Left, take it away.
All right. So good evening, everyone. So Ms. Figueroa and I will go through the budget presentation. It's the same presentation we did just last week. Obviously, not a lot has changed in the last seven days. So we'll go back and forth as we go through this presentation, and then we'll check for any questions at the end. I guess maybe the one update is that we still do not have a number regarding what is expected for state aid. So the unknown from last week remains an unknown this week as we present this for a second time. All right. Julie, will you get started?
Sure. So the only thing that I have changed is that we did, as a group, adopt the budget. The board adopted the budget last Tuesday, May 19th. And you're going to have to go to the next page. So on the first slide, we pretty much, I'm just describing how we go through the budget development process. We analyze and look at our current year, our actual numbers, and we look at what we've budgeted for the year and try to figure out, you know, how we can move forward with the new year. We consider any cost trends that have happened or gone on over the past five years to try to adjust some of those numbers and make them make sense in our budget. We look at and identify different areas that we see that we might have cost increases or areas that we might have potential savings and incorporate those into our budget. We look for places where we need adequate funding to meet district goals and make sure that we implement those into the budget. And then, of course, we have to look at our five-year projected use of fund balance and make sure that we're not going too far with our budget or what can we afford to do and use for our fund balance to help meet that revenue gap? Because we do have our tax cap now, so we want to be careful about using that fund balance and how much we use each year. So this year, like all other districts across the state, we've had to deal with the effects of our COVID-19 and how, you know, that's going to affect state aid coming from the state. They've reduced our budget because of the state aid that they're taking away from us. So we've had to submit a revised preliminary budget. That's what we did last week. We looked for final approval, and we're submitting that budget for voter approval now. And tonight is the budget hearing.
So just some quick highlights of what's included in the next few slides. I think for many years, the district has certainly been fiscally responsible in terms of its budgeting. And I think that's even more evident this year. This budget reflects $1.2 million less in expenses than the budget we were prepared to go public with in January. And that's all based upon the rollback of state aid and then the anticipated loss of state aid. So although we don't know what that number is, we projected 5%. And as anyone has heard, the governor has said that schools may be cut up to 20%. So obviously, if that's the event, if that's what happens, there are certainly more cuts that would be necessary. But 5% is what we projected, and that's what's included in this presentation. So that brings us to a .44% budget-to-budget increase. Again, I think it's very fiscally responsible. And our tax levy cap or limit is we remain within our allowable tax levy limit of 1.42%. And that's the ninth consecutive year that we are within our allowable levy. Our tax rate remains below what it was in the 2015-2016 school year. That's the current year's rate, is $465 less than it was. And I think that speaks to the fiscal responsibility. And I pretty much summed that up. Go ahead, John.
So as we move forward and we focus on our district goals and sustaining programs as best we can, based on the cuts. You can go to the next slide. We took, we take a look at the enrollment and our enrollment for the upcoming year. As it change, it will change. But right now, we're looking at 1,595 students for the 2021 school year. A bit of a decline in the enrollment, as other districts are experiencing as well. So our priorities for the 2021 budget, of course, are our student programs, remaining fiscally responsible, looking at future capital costs, because we still have to do that, even though, you know, our priority is the student programs. And so that involves the upkeep of our buildings and whatnot, and also our staffing needs.
So as we shared, beginning back in January, we were always anticipating reducing some positions through attrition. So those reductions include 3.6 FTE, 2.6 of which are through attrition. The final position was a permanent subposition elementary school. That was a one-year placement. And our increases, originally, we were looking to hire a library media specialist as well as the library aide. But that, as we'll get to later, became one of the cuts made through our most recent adoption of the budget. So we're still recommending a library aide position, and that person will be split between elementary and the middle school and help cover the new learning commons at the middle school.
So we do have some other increases in the budget that were necessary to move forward. And those are our health costs increased. So those would involve our fringe costs for employees. Our health costs are going up about 3%. Our state pension rates are going up between 1 and 1 and 1/4%, depending on which pension you're talking about, either the employees or the teacher's retirement system. Our transportation costs, they will be increasing by CPI. We do not have the final transportation CPI allowance yet released from the state. So when I know what that number is, we will reveal that, except I don't think it's going to be before we have the budget vote. If it is, I will update the slide to include that information. Our operations and maintenance expenses, we have a capital outlay project that we've included in the budget. This is to help smooth out the upkeep of our HVAC systems. So in order to do that, we need to incorporate annual upkeeps, upkeep of that system and to input systems each year, units each year in order to not have to replace them in an emergency situation. We need to be able to control the flow of the cost of that. And by doing that project all in one, putting that money in the budget in one year, we can go up to $100,000 in one single year to make it a capital outlay project. We also redeemed 60% of the cost of that in aid the following year. So we don't have to wait 25 or 30 years to collect back on those costs for those repairs. NICEAG is our electric company, New York State Electric and Gas. There was a prediction early on in the budget process that is not finalized yet. It speaks to increasing rates up to 24%. Of course, nonprofits or business and residential could have different levels of increases. So we don't know what that is yet, but we are anticipating an increase there. And there are going to be some costs associated with additional cleaning supplies, disinfecting of facilities due to COVID-19. Whether that's ramping up or going in the other direction, I'm really not sure. But of course, as body, more bodies come into the district, if that's where we are in September, the costs of that are definitely going to be increased. There's going to be more cleaning going on than ever before. Contractual costs, we have our natural salary increases. We have our vendor contracts. And of course, cost of doing business goes up naturally from year to year. And then we have some unfunded mandates coming our way this year, in addition to the ones that we already own. So we have ongoing costs associated with building survey and additional water testing. They come up every so many years, so that's why I'm mentioning those two. On a good note, or on a better note, there are some budget savings that we can count on. We have an outstanding technology department. Our tech district technology team constantly creates savings for the district by performing many of our upgrades in-house and not farming them out to private companies whenever we can. Our operations and maintenance team, buildings and grounds, are able to provide a lot of skilled services that, again, would otherwise be outsourced. Our transportation department, we did have a study of our transportation services. And the study revealed that the district is maximizing safety as well as savings after having done, you know, a study of both a combination of the services that we provide and the contractor services. So we're pleased, and we'll be renewing their contract for next year. Staff retirements, we've had, we're having a few this June and then two in the fall. So four full-time teachers are retiring over the next year. Again, two at the end of this year and two in the fall. The middle school is developing a new bell schedule and changing their schedule to try and share some staff between the high school and the middle school. So that's another way that we're thinking of creative savings for our staff. And then we have our cooperative purchasing, which is purchasing that we do through, for our technology furniture and through our BOSIs to try and help reduce the cost of that by getting aid back on those purchases. So we've had to revisit the 2021 budget after the April 1st state aid reduction. So before the governor announced that we could have up to a 20% reduction in state aid, they enacted a budget that reduced our foundation aid. Our foundation aid is the largest part of the aid that this school district receives. So the reduction in the foundation aid in conjunction with some lower interest earnings because of the closure and the, you know, the economics of our society right now, we're going to get lower interest rates on our investments. We're due to lose about $568,000 from the first round of cuts that were made. So we're going to try to utilize some savings from that close, from this closure period while the school's closed. And my conservative estimate of that number right now is about $280,000. And that number can change after we go through our year-end audit and come to the end of our fiscal year, which is coming very quickly. We're already having a preliminary audit in a couple of weeks. We'll maximize some of our expense-based state aids and take advantage of that by doing some early-on purchases this year and receiving that aid next year rather than spreading it out over the next five years. So it was about $180,000. We also were able to reduce some of our budget expenses after that first round of cuts. We removed the installment purchase agreement for our laptops. We're not going to spread them out. We're going to purchase them this year. And we're reducing teaching position by 0.6. So the current budget considerations that we've had to take into, you know, take into consideration, things we have to take into consideration after learning about the governor's threat to reduce aid further, you know, could we have to go up to the 20%? We don't have his final determination on that number. Dr. Left spoke to reducing the aid by like another 5%. That's what we've done so far. But there is the reality that we may have to go to as high as 20%. That for us would be, in addition to what we're talking about tonight, another $1.2 million. So we don't want to go there yet, but it is a reality that we need to think about. The governor released an executive order that calls for a budget vote by June 9th, which has forced the district to adopt a budget without knowing what our final aid will be. The school districts have had to propose this budget with the reasonable expectation of how much aid they will get so that we know what we have to put in from our fund balance to close that gap or what cuts do we have to make in the budget that will impact programs. And now that the district knows they may face additional cuts after the budget gets adopted, we're thinking about how we're going to be handling that. Are we going to have to go back to our reserves? Are we going to have to make additional cuts in the budget? What can we afford to do and what can we afford to cut as far as the programs go? So we haven't, we haven't had to make those decisions yet, but we may have to.
So as you mentioned earlier, this is a summary of the cuts that we are projecting to offset the 5% that we took out of the budget. So it represents curriculum work, overtime and professional development under the administrative side. And then, under instruction and co-curricular, the library media specialist position, which we spoke about earlier, a reduction of second-grade teacher. Now, this was something we spoke about earlier in the budget process, and the decision was made to cut a section at another grade level. But still, second grade remains our smallest class size. And we believe that we can, we know we can, we can reduce our section in second grade and still remain well within acceptable class sizes. In fact, even after removing a section in second grade, second grade would not be the largest class size, even at the elementary school. Other classes would still have more students, even though they had more sections. Mandarin courses in 7th and 10th grade, that was mostly based upon student interest. We only had five students express interest in continuing with Mandarin in 7th grade. That's obviously not enough students to, for them to make a two-year commitment in. And we were able to combine our 9th and 10th grade classes into a single class. So there were some savings there. The .4 special education teacher is a position that we created this year for scheduling reasons at the elementary school. And we're going to change the schedule up to no longer need that position. Instructional support specialist or teachers who provide professional development for other teachers. Three teaching assistants is obviously a tough one, but we're working to identify which positions would be affected by those cuts. 10% reduction in after-school clubs, that's across all three buildings. And then the fringe, the benefits associated with the personnel issues brings us to 629,000, which is about 5% of our total aid for this school year.
So in preparation for what we might see as additional state aid reductions, the things that we need to think about are possibly extracurricular activities, including some sports, stipends in clubs, elective offerings, increased class sizes, maybe materials and supplies, maybe building maintenance supplies, music, theater options, BOSIs programs, field trips, arts and education. Even though the BOSIs and field trips and arts and education bring back aid the following year, there still are things there that we may need to consider not doing in lieu of cuts in the budget. Maybe some administrative costs, staff monitors, teaching assistants, office personnel, custodial, teachers, transportation outside of the home-to-school mandates. We still don't have any direction on that. So there, all of these, or some of these, or a combination of these are things that, if we have to cut any more based on aid cuts, these are things that could get taken back in the budget and not be fulfilled entirely. So just to give you some additional budget statistics, we've talked about some of them already. This is the ninth consecutive year that the district is presenting a budget that's under the tax cap. Our budget-to-budget average change over the past five years, again, very fiscally responsible, 1.5% if you average the change over the past five years. Our tax rate change over the past five years has actually gone down 4.9%. That equates to about $1.33 for every $1,000 of assessment that your home is worth. So to give an example, I did something on an average home in Putnam County that's valued at $350,000. And this is just for Putnam Valley. In Putnam County, the average is about 350. But in Putnam Valley, the taxes, the school taxes on that home would be about $9,500 in 2015-16. In 2019-20, those taxes were $9,128. Again, $465 less than they were five years ago. I think the school is making the right decisions fiscally to help keep those taxes down. And that's an example of what we've done over the past five years to make that happen. Our star eligible residents are also receiving a 2019 school tax relief check because we've stayed under that cap. So that will happen again this year. So included in the district budget, you're going to see all of our revenue sources and all of our expense sources. Our revenue sources come from state aid, about 20%. Maybe not 20% this year, but normally, it's about 20%. Our local sources include our investments, any reimbursements we get from vendors or BOSIs, and our tax levy. That makes up about 80% of our revenues. And then also our appropriated fund balance and reserves. Those monies make up the difference and close the gap between the revenues and the expenses when we need them to, conservatively, of course. The expenses, the expense side of that equation is we pay for general education programs. We pay for special education and support services, any transportation services, our salaries and benefits for everyone in the district, and any administrative operation and maintenance costs. And just to mention, you may see the capital construction project going on. While we're closed, the capital construction project budget is a separate budget, has nothing to do with the annual school district budget. And that budget was passed under a separate referendum in 2018. And that will continue to go on aside from the annual budget. This is our proposed budget or adopted budget broken down into three parts. Our program, which is made, makes up about 77% of the budget. Our capital portion of the budget, which makes up 12%. And the administrative portion of the budget, which makes up about 11%. So here are our revenues, broken down by category and in comparison to a prior year. So we have our state aid. We're projecting that at $11.3 million or a 2.9% increase over last year. Our local sources, 602,000. That would be our, if we had any tuitions, if we had any investment earnings, if we have any refunds from vendors. Our tax levy, 38 million, just a little bit over 38 million, which is an increase of 1.42% under the tax, under the allowable tax cap. Our appropriated fund balance, I did originally project the use of appropriated fund balance at $800,000. But because we have the $280,000 in what we feel we're saving in the closure expenditure area of the current year's budget, I was able to add that to what we're appropriating for next year to help close some of that gap in missing aid. So we're going to appropriate one, just a little over $1 million. And the other reserves that we'll be appropriating through some of our other restricted reserves is $900,000 also to help close that gap. And our total budget is $51,907,863, a change of .44%. On the expenditure side of the budget, we have our general support category at $4.7 million. That covers all of our operations, maintenance, administrative, finance, business office, and insurances. So that's $4.7 million. Our instructional portion of the budget, $29.1 million, undistributed, which is, covers our employee benefits. Employee benefits include workers' compensation, health insurance coverage, pension, two different pension plans, and unemployment insurance. So that's $11.8 million. Our transportation costs, a little over $3 million. And our debt service, which is our bond and interest payments on capital work, a little over $3 million. Again, the total budget, $51,907,863, or a change of .44%. That's under 1% difference over last year. I added this slide. It was here last week, too. I don't know how many people have gotten a chance to look at it. It's a three-year summary of what our budget expenditures are. It's a little bit more detailed than just the former slide that we looked at. And again, it's not even the full budget. The full budget is about 17 or 18 pages, and it's on our website. It's accessible on our district website to look down even further into the budget. But this gives even a further breakdown than what I just talked about. And I think it's a good resource for people to look at to get an idea of what's included in different areas of the budget. So our 2021 budget and tax levy, to summarize, our budget is $51,907,863. That's the number that voters will be voting on with their absentee ballot that's coming in the mail. And our tax levy change over the prior year is $38,0949, a difference of 1.42% over the prior year. So the 2021 budget, it remains under the tax cap. It sustains the programs that we have in place. And again, it invests in our children in Putnam Valley. We've had a number of administrative team meetings concerning budget to prepare for the originally proposed budget. And again, afterwards, in having to get back together to decide what cuts were going to have to be made in order to try and make ends meet. So I want to say thank you to the administrative team for helping to plan that budget that meets goals and remains fiscally responsible. And I'm going to talk a little bit about a contingency budget in hopes that that's not the case. But this year, we don't have the, or we haven't gotten any guidance and has, there's been no talk about the possibility for a revote. Normally, if a budget doesn't pass, there are other options. But it doesn't look like that's going to be the case this year. So if there is a contingency budget, what we face is a tax levy limit that's restricted to the prior year's levy, a reduction in our school budget, again, over the 1.2 that we've already reduced it by, would be an additional $531,000. Some other smaller things that would have to happen is any outside groups would have to be charged to use the facilities. Any capital improvement expenses, unless they were directly related to health and safety, could not be done. Any equipment costs, any equipment could not be purchased unless it was directly related to health and safety. So there could be other potential cuts. Obviously, 531,000. Obviously, $531,000 is a significant number. And we would see staffing and programs affected, extracurricular activities and athletics. Those are some of the things that could potentially be cut with a $531,000 reduction. So we ask everyone to honor their absentee ballot when it comes in the mail. It will be, I think mailed out, I believe, this week. They're going out. They should be arriving soon. So the school budget vote is on June, is being counted on June 9th. So I say that because they're absentee ballot voting only. The ballots have to be received by 5 o'clock, by 5:00 PM on June 9th. Not postmarked. They have to be received by that date. They should be mailed back to the district. The post office, the United States Post Office will be handling that mail. They recommend mailing those ballots back by June 2nd in order for the district to receive them on time to be counted. So I can't say enough about how important it is that when you get the ballot, to try and immediately respond to it and not let it sit and wait so you'd, you know, people don't forget about it. Absentee ballots or voting questions can be directed to Maureen Bellino, our district clerk. Her email address is there, mbellino@pvcsd.org. She can be reached by phone. She has phone messages or email that she can respond to in the district. The district office is open on a daily basis. There are phone messages for myself or my email, jfigarella@pvcsd.org. People can direct questions and get the answers to the questions that they have and that are weighing on their minds for the budget. And to find out what those correct answers are, I see a lot of things on social media, most of the time not entirely true or not entirely transparent to what is actually going on. So I appreciate the questions so that I can give clear answers to those questions. And does the board have any questions?
Jill, I have a quick question. The enrollment projections that you're using, are they the same since January? Are they consistent, or have they been?
Which projections? I'm sorry, I missed the beginning.
The enrollment projections?
The enrollment, the enrollment projections are not exactly the same. We haven't had a lot of activity. There are, there is activity going on, though. So the change is about five since I gave it, gave the presentation in March. That number has only changed by five. It can change right up until the beginning of school. There's been some chatter about children moving from private school to public schools. I don't know how valid it is. Obviously, there's expenditures for people out there that may not, you know, they want to use the public school system and set. So we may be experiencing an influx of a few students.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I have, is there no other board questions? So there were two questions, budget questions sent in. The first question has to do with the cut at second grade and the number of sections in each grade level. So the changes would be, we're anticipating five sections of kindergarten. That's always a bit of an unknown. But I know we had, I think, just about 100 students register for kindergarten already. So that's, that five section number looks accurate for kindergarten. About five sections of first grade, second grade would move from five to four sections. But we only have approximately 90 students in second grade, and not all of those students are broken up into those classes. So even if 90 students were broken up into the four sections, that would be 22 students per class, which is a pretty reasonable number. Third grade would also have five sections, and fourth grade will have gone from six sections last year or this year to five sections next year. So fourth grade would be the one that was below five, but just because of, based upon the number of students in that grade. The second question has to do with a timeline for when the governor might announce additional cuts. Right now, the timeline we're going on is May 15th. He's late. We haven't given that number yet, but that was the last date that was thrown out there, was that we would be notified by May 15th. We built our budget around, or scheduled for our budget around having that information on the 15th before we proposed our budget on the 19th, and it never arrived. So we do not have a date when to expect it now. I think the last thing he said was he was waiting to see what happened with the federal government before he made any decisions. So in terms of budget cuts, it's very much a wait-and-see situation for us. And that's it for the community questions.
I did see today that he did say he's going to DC tomorrow. But he made it very clear, if there's nothing, it's going to be 20%, 20% cut. If there's no new dollars coming in, it's going to be 20% for police, 20% for healthcare, 20% for fire, 20% teachers. He said very clearly it was unequivocal in being clear that we really are kind of at the mercy of the federal government at this point and our representatives. I'm going to suggest that if you care, then you might want to reach out to our representatives and representatives of other neighboring states to, you know, they'll listen even less, to get some traction for additional state relief from the federal government. I have a vote question or a vote issue. I, as of today, still have not received the postcard that was describing the process for ballots, which almost becomes moot seeing as, I think the ballots are going to be, and the newsletters are going out, I'm assuming the same day, to voters or eligible voters and to the community.
The ballots, I anticipate them being dropped into the mail today or tomorrow morning from the location that printed them. The yellow cards, which many people did receive them today. I called the post office this morning, and they told me they were dropped to the Putnam Valley residences today. Mr. Farrar, you live in Putnam Valley, correct? Not in Cortland Manor. I know Cortland Manor received them as well, so I can't speak to your unique situation. But they were supposed to have been all in the mailboxes today. I can tell you, I'm with Joe.
I received mine.
Right. Yeah.
Let me know tomorrow if you did not.
Same thing. Some people got them, some people did not. I think, you know, it's a mixed bag across the, across the town. I would suspect that if some of the town received it today, the rest will receive it tomorrow. And surrounding towns have been getting them as well. So I'm sure people are sharing that information. But, and I also, I want to thank, I think the teachers' union also sent out a reminder to everyone. And the CSCA also sent out an email to everyone to remind them. We're trying to get to as many people as we can to remind them of the vote because the closure just causes more, you know, I'm sorry, I'm at a loss for the word, but like, you know, complacency about having to do it. And we're going to be putting things on the sign, you know, and whatnots to remind people to make sure they look for them.
So the postcards drop not first class, and the ballots and the newsletters will?
The ballots are definitely first class. The postcards were not. They were through two current residents, so that's a bulk mail. And I believe the newsletter is a bulk mail, but the ballots are first class. If you have two voters in your household, you should receive two ballots addressed specifically to those people.
And the news, the newsletters are going out, I believe, the day after tomorrow. And it's not, they're not being sent out late. They're being sent out within the timeframe that's allowed. And unfortunately, they, the state does, you know, dictate to us what that timeframe is because it has the budget notice contained on the newsletter. They, they want it out at a certain time. We are going to post it on our website as soon as it's printed tomorrow. So we'll have it out there for people to get information. And all of the information that they get on that newsletter, although it's compacted and bulleted and whatnot, they still can get that same information. I want to make sure they know that. On the website, it's right on our homepage to go to, to click on it, and it gives the whole budget and its breakdown, and this presentation as well.
So for the 41 people who are watching now, that's great. But for the
I know.
The remaining 6,000 or 5,000 people, that being in mailboxes is really important. And you know, the idea of a ballot being in somebody's hands before our information being in somebody's hands is troubling because somebody might just vote without any information. So anything that can be done to accelerate that newsletter to coincide with the ballots themselves, and if we have the opportunity to make that deliver faster, because we know at this point, given even how slow the postcard took to mail, the newsletter will take, will take even longer. I'm hoping that we get those two to converge. And additionally, I would imagine we will put up those, the typical signs that we do in the major intersections as well as, you know, just on our school signs for, you know, remember to vote by, we're doing some sort of signage, physical signage.
Yeah, we could certainly reach out to the town and see if we can get additional signs put up. I don't know if those signs were already updated with the original vote date. So we would just have to check on the turnaround time to get them updated and ready to go with the current information, being we only found out about it two weeks ago.
I know Dave would be more than happy to create new signs for those dates.
I'll follow up with them.
We have another budget question. Someone's asking, what is the budget to budget increase?
So the budget to budget change is 0.44%, so under 1%. That's 0.44% over last year's budget.
And the other question they asked us, can ballots be postmarked June 9th? The answer to that is no. They must be received by 5:00 PM on June 9th. The postmark the next day does not count. And that's not our rule. That's the state rule.
Jeremy, do you want to end screen sharing so we can go back to? Okay.
Maureen, are there going to be any, like, if somebody doesn't get a ballot, are there going to be any way to pick one up?
I would make sure they're able to get one if they contact me. Absolutely.
So they would have to contact you if they didn't get one?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good question.
And for proof, I should say for proof, but to settle anybody's anxiety of ballot stuffing, we, the poll workers will be checking off those that have already voted if they did by mail and then decide that they didn't receive one, that only one vote per voter will be counted.
Each envelope will be checked in prior to being opened.
Okay. Good question. Okay, our only other presentation for the evening is related to the vote, and it is the selection of a school vote chairperson from the school board.
Not it.
We need someone to be at the vote, to watch over the counting, or a co-chair people is fine as well, from 5:00 to when we're done.
Okay, and Mr. Farrar cannot.
Mr. Farrar should not, no.
So I would have no problem being that person. If anybody wants to be a co-chair with me, that's fine, but you can put me down for that, Maureen.
I can assist if needed. Thank you, Tina. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Dr. Luft, superintendent's report. You've been very busy in our closure.
Sure. So I got a couple of things. Obviously, the most pressing issue on everyone's mind is graduation and moving up ceremonies. I know we shared information about that at the end of last week, and more detailed information was shared with our senior parents. I think nobody's, nobody's happy with the options that were shared because everybody truly just wants it to be a normal ceremony. And, but as everyone's aware, that's just simply not an option. So what we shared were two options. The first being, our first priority is the closest we believe we can get to a full ceremony. And that would be splitting the class in two and doing a socially distant ceremonies on the 18th and 19th of June, I believe, were the dates. Maybe the first concern about that is that it's currently not allowed. We know for a fact that the state will not approve that as our graduation plan at this time. But we're hopeful that that may change in the next couple of weeks. So while we're planning for that, we're simultaneously planning for sort of our Plan B, which was having the students walk across the stage, receive their diploma, have their parents there to take pictures. We would schedule the students in small groups. Now, while everyone would love to be with their entire class, our students were very clear. We did a Zoom call with over half the senior class, joined the Zoom call, and they were very clear. They didn't want to graduate in a car, and they wanted an opportunity to be able to walk across the stage or walk across the turf to receive their diploma. So we made sure that both of our options afforded students that opportunity. For fourth and eighth grade moving up, the ceremonies themselves will be virtual, but we are planning sort of farewell drive-bys. So fourth and eighth grade students will have an opportunity to decorate their cars and to drive through the campuses and say goodbye to their teachers before moving on to the next building. And that was really the major request that came from those parents. Seniors, actually, Dr. and Dre shared this morning, the sort of the variety of activities we're doing for our seniors. So that include a senior parade, the senior Palooza event, as well as the options for graduation. So we are certainly doing everything we can to recognize our seniors within the constraints that are given to us by the state. So I know that parents have contacted me today. I believe that a petition was shared with the board right before the meeting, so you probably haven't seen it yet, but the request is for graduation to be postponed to the summer. Just some initial concerns I have with that, and certainly can share them here. My first concern is if we do nothing in June and hope for something better in July, if the state doesn't prove it in July, we can, we can try again in August. But then if the state doesn't approve it in August, now our seniors are going off to college, and we have essentially missed our opportunity to honor them through some sort of graduation ceremony, whatever that means, given the guidance that we have from the state. So I, as a superintendent, would feel terrible missing our opportunity in June to do something. From the beginning, we've always held out a hope that we can do a larger mass gathering in the fall as a secondary way to honor our senior class. The thought was to schedule an event prior to the homecoming football game, so that is certainly on the table if it was allowable to do so. But as everyone's aware, we're not even sure if we'll have fall sports, and fall weddings have been canceled. And everyone expects professional sports to go on without fans, and all of those speak to the mindset of whether or not mass gatherings will even be allowed in the fall. So that's certainly one concern I have about postponing it, is that I don't want to miss the opportunity. The second piece is, I think every student deserves the opportunity to graduate. And if we postpone it to June or to August or to the fall, it's inevitable that students are not going to be there. Students are going to take jobs. They may join the military. They may be at summer session at school. There's a variety of things that students are going to go on to do once they graduate. And it's my belief that any graduation that takes place after the last day of school this year will not include every student. We will certainly miss students, and students will have missed their opportunity to graduate from high school. So that's a second concern. The third is, there's certainly parents that are really eager to have a full ceremony. And I would say most are pushing for that for And I would say most are pushing for that first option of uh, having a socially distant ceremonies on the eighteenth and nineteenth. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that parents have reached out to me and have already expressed that they would prefer not to have those, uh, socially distanced gatherings. And they preferred the second option, uh, due to the COVID nineteen crisis. So, by delaying it and pushing the envelope with a full gathering, I just want to recognize that there are some parents and some families that are not, have already expressed that they're not comfortable being in that situation and have advocated that we just do the individual family ceremonies on the stage. So, um, why, I don't think that's the majority of our parents, those parents are certainly out there as well. So, those are, are some of my initial feelings. Obviously, I mean, the petition is addressed to the board, so the board could respond to it, um, when the timing is right. But I was going to talk about graduation and moving up in my report anyway. So I wanted just to cover those few items. We filmed a new episode of Inside Putnam Valley Schools with Eric Gross. We touch on all of these topics, uh, graduation, moving up and as well as budget. And I know with some, uh, masterful editing, uh, Mr. Dan Mahoney was able to get that out, um, in less than twenty-four hours. So that's something that everyone could be on the lookout for. And I did want to point out that our own Barbara Armley was recognized of the New York State School Board Association for her, she received the Board Excellence Award. So, the next time we see you, I will be sure to drop it off to you, but we wanted to recognize you. And I think the last topic or last couple of topics, one, I wanted just to emphasize, uh, the importance for community members to fill out their ballot and return it, uh, it would encourage as soon as possible. And that, uh, we must receive it by the June ninth at five P M. Uh, and it cannot be, uh, counted if we receive it afterwards. And I have no guarantee of how long it'll take to get here um, through the mail system. So, that sort of public service announcement. And the other question I get a lot of, which will be discussed during the board meeting tonight, is the last day of the school year. And the recommendation before the board this evening is to adjust the school calendar to make June nineteenth the last day of the school year. So, if you stay tuned for the rest of the meeting, that resolution will be before the board this evening. And, uh, we'll go forward from there. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Ms. Plino, do we have any questions on any agenda items, including Dr. Luft's report?
The, the only questions were related to graduation and Dr. Luft addressed them, I believe, already. And the letter he refers to that came in is in all of your individual email accounts.
You mean the petition, the letter with petition?
It's a letter, yes.
Okay, yes, yeah, I saw that. Okay. Moving on then to new business. Mr. Faro, can you start us with number one?
Is it all upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to continue the moratorium on approving admission of non-resident children or professional staff who are not previously enrolled in district schools during the twenty nineteen twenty school year with no tuition and that siblings of those students currently enrolled in the district may attend with specific approval of the board and the payment of tuition.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number two.
Um, I guess I'll fill in the blank, right? Um, resolve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Janine Fararo as chairperson for the June ninth twenty twenty school budget vote and Board of Education trustee election.
We just got married.
You just married Joe and you said Janine Fararo?
Oh, sorry. Janine Ruffo. Shall I read it again?
And we, we are board husbands.
I'll read it again. Resolve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Janine Ruffo as chairperson for the June ninth twenty twenty school budget vote and Board of Education trustee election.
I think it should be adjusted to say co-chair people, her, you and Jeanette, just in case.
Okay, just in case.
Shall I read it again?
Yes.
Try it one more time.
Okay. Resolve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint Janine Ruffo as chairperson and Jeanette Yetter as co-chairperson for the June ninth twenty twenty school budget vote and Board of Election Trustee election. Board of Education trustee election.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three.
You're muted, Barbara.
Uh-oh.
My phone keeps ringing, it never rings at night. Resolve that the Board of Education of the Putnam Valley Central School District approve a property tax report card for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year referenced in the minutes of this meeting as document number one seven seven slash twenty and authorize the district treasurer to submit it to the state education department.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a comment? Number four.
Resolve to approve and authorize the superintendent of schools to enter into a supplemental, supplement, supplemental memorandum of agreement with the Putnam Valley Federation of Teachers regard to the twenty nineteen twenty contractual work year as per document one seventy-eight slash twenty attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five.
Resolve to revise the two thousand nineteen twenty school calendar to reflect the last day of school to be Friday, June nineteenth twenty twenty due to the COVID nineteen school closure as per document number one seventy-nine dash twenty attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? And Dr. Luft, that reflects that by that date, we have already met our one hundred and eighty days requirement of education.
Correct.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Number six.
Be it resolved that the superintendent is hereby authorized to direct psychiatric and medical examinations and evaluation of employee number zero five two six two zero two zero in accordance with the provisions of section nine one three of the education law. And be it further resolved that the board may hereby, that the board hereby directs that employee number zero five two six two zero two zero submit their medical records and therapy notes, if any, to the extent that, to extent and for the time as determined by examining physicians to the board designated examining physicians at or before such examination evaluation.
Second, questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to employ the services of Andrew P. Levin, M.D. of Columbia University, two eighty North Central Avenue, Hartsdale, New York, for the purpose of conducting an examination and evaluation of employee number zero five two six two zero two zero pursuant to education law section nine one three at the rate of five hundred dollars per hour for a maximum of eight hours.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to public comment on any topic, anything from the board? Any additional, uh, questions from the community, Maureen?
Yep, we just received a new one. So, the new question that just came in has to do with the starting a school in September, uh, specifically for students, asking about students who are changing buildings from one building to the other. So, I mean, the community should know that obviously these conversations started a long time ago and they continue to take place um, on a daily basis as we sort of do these theoretical exercises. Uh, but we don't know what the school opening will look like. We don't know what the guidance will be. We don't know what situation will be in regarding COVID nineteen. And so we have to plan for everything. So everything includes continuation of distance learning with the closure of schools all the way to a typical opening of schools and everything in between. So, uh, many people have had the opportunity to look at the C D C guidance, which takes you through three different levels. Um, none of those levels include a return to normalcy. Um, so, those are all factors that we're taking into consideration. We are in the process of, uh, putting together a task force that will explore the reentry process and help to develop our wide range of contingency plans based upon what we received from the state. So we anticipate that work beginning as early as next week. Uh, when that task force will get together for the first time. We've also been in consultation with our consultants and our regional, um, specialists regarding this topic to make sure that we have all of the latest information and best practices uh, to consider as we consider the reopening. So, unfortunately, this is a topic that has many more questions than answers, but you should know that is something that we are actively engaged in on a daily basis. And as information becomes available, we will be sure to share it with the entire community as soon as possible.
Jeremy, how are, how are people going to get on this task force? How it? I mean, I, I'm interested in who's on and, and in serving or helping if I can, but I, how is, how is it going to be determined?
The rest of the board didn't notify you that you were?
No. I missed that.
Well, she's celebrated and has a certificate and everything, so.
Me and Val told you?
Yeah. So the structure of who should be on the committee was provided, or who the state recommends being on the committee was provided by the state. So that's sort of the guidelines we're using. Uh, we're in the process of putting together each of those stakeholders now. Uh, it'll include, uh, parents, community members, representative from the town, obviously, teachers, administrators, C S C A employees, uh, or a school physician and a school nurse. So it's a really wide-ranging committee that will come together. And then really our hope is to form sort of specialized subcommittees. There's too much work for the whole committee to do together, but to be able to break up into smaller groups based upon interest and, and specialization. So that's our plan moving forward. I've already had many parents reach out to me and express interest in joining the committee. And, um, we'll be contacting those individuals, uh, either this week or very early next week as we, uh, as we plan our first, uh, virtual meeting together.
Have we asked, are we asking, um, P T A or P T S A officers specifically to sit on that committee?
We did specifically reach out to the P T A, or we are in the process of doing so. Um, we actually were trying to set up a, a couple of different things with the P T A uh, regarding the budget process as well as the reopening of schools. So, uh, that work is something that certainly, uh, is underway.
High school students?
We, we spoke about it, it's, that's not a required group. Uh, I, we certainly would have opportunities to, uh, to engage high school students within the process, especially as things come up. Um, but it's, it's something we can consider. But right now, they're not, we don't have spots slated for high school students.
Okay, um, I'm, I've been, you know, when you're talking to different, when I'm talking to different people and you probably have talked to the same people, um, like, we don't know, oh, how many parents would put their kids on a bus? As opposed to driving them themselves? Um, how many people are, are actively thinking that they would not send their children back to school in September unless there's a, like, do we have any way of gathering information from our community, our parents of, of just how they're feeling, like a questionnaire, I don't know, something outreach to get information from them as a group?
So, you bring up very real issues, things that we've spoken about. Um, there are certainly a subset of parents that would send their kids to school tomorrow if we unlock the doors and we invoke them in. And there's a subset of parents who have already notified me that they refuse to send their kids back to school in September regardless of what happens. And, and that's our community. And that's regardless of what changes or what happens between now and then, that division that's going to exist. So we just have to make decisions that we think are in the best interest of all children. It's very difficult for us to provide simultaneous in-school and at-home instruction. Um, so we can't really accommodate both groups fully, uh, every day. But, I mean, everything's on the table. We've, we've discussed split schedules and rotating schedules and all of those things that could be the part of the guidance when it's actually issued. So, um, I would think all those are on the table.
There are outspoken parents that would contact you directly, but there's a whole group of parents that would not. And I just wondered if, if something like a questionnaire out to parents, again, you're not going to get everybody to respond, but maybe you'd get, you'd hear from people that don't feel comfortable calling you directly. I don't, I'm just.
A, a survey is, is a very real option. Uh, I think I would prefer to wait. Uh, let's wait and see what happens, uh, how much changes in the next month or so, but we could certainly throw that out there. I mean, the other piece that I think is important to mention is, I believe there are sixty-two school districts within forty minutes of us. So, this cannot be, even though individual districts will be asked to submit plans to the state, it just doesn't make any sense why, um, any one district's plan would be vastly different than any of their neighboring districts. So there's certainly some work underway in a regional capacity to develop plans based upon a template that everyone agrees to, and then allowing individual districts to uh, individualize those plans in ways that make sense for that district. So, that's something else that work is also underway. And it just makes sense, why would our plan be vastly different than Lakeland's or Mayapack's or Carmels?
That can be a B O C's function.
Yeah, so we're on a call, uh, every week that's hosted through B O C's and, uh, uh, Jim Ryan, the, the district superintendent is on that call along with some assistant superintendents from B O C's. And, uh, Frank, who's the regional safety coordinator. So, all of those individuals are on those weekly meetings. And they certainly would be part of those discussions, um, regarding the development of a template. And that's, that's a smaller group of Putnam County, but we're also in a much larger group with, um, the entire, uh, lower Hudson Council of School superintendents, which is a much larger group.
And when do we expect, do you, or do you expect the state task force to give you any guidance or input?
Well, I take this with a grain of salt, I'm still expecting my state aid runs. Um, so. But yes, but there was mention of the state providing additional guidance in June and asking districts to submit their plans in July. But that's the extent of the information that I have.
And that, when in June, is too short for me. It seems to me if we're getting information in June and have to turn it back by July, like, it's going to be really hard to get a committee together to make any decisions in that short a timeframe, so.
Let's just say I would not be surprised if the guidance came out the last week in June and that the plans were due the first week in July.
There's only so much, uh, supply for demand of, uh, of Plexiglas windows, of Plexiglas dividers.
Do not plan on lining the buildings with Plexiglas.
Um, and Natalie did say, maybe, um.
I will say, there are some, there's a lot of talk over, um, like, we have evaluations in special education that we have to do um, in order for us to move forward. There's certainly talk about, you know, can we create a safe environment to, to do some, to keep moving forward on some of those evaluations? Speech therapy or occupational therapy, those kind of one-on-one services at some point in time. Um, will it be more realistic for us to provide some of those types of, um, services? You know, I think that, again, like, you know, Dr. Luft said, I think every discussion and every idea has got to be on the table in order to address some of these issues. Um, there are children that really couldn't wear a mask. Um, it would be impossible, even to do an evaluation, it would be impossible. It would be really difficult to, to do an evaluation of a student with a mask on, with two people wearing masks. Um, so there are, there are so many, there are layers and layers of, of things that we're going to need to address over the coming weeks and months on a reentry plan.
Right.
And I think they're valid.
And I'm concerned, I think that there are students out there, a variety of ages, for whom the stress of this time has been, and it might not be a student that you anticipated. It might, you know, and I don't know how we would gather that information and, and know, notify parents that if you know that your child has really struggled with the isolation or with the loss or with whatever, to reach out to the school and give us some of that information so that we're not flying blind when we go back.
I do think, I do think a lot of our teachers, um, I do think, I do think a lot of our teachers, really, our clinicians have been working with our teachers who are really seeing the kids the most. You know, obviously, our clinicians are constantly reaching out to students, to families. I think, but I think the primary, what you're talking about is really going to come from a teacher who either is communicating with children or with their parents on getting that feedback. So, I think it's a very valid point of really digging even deeper, you know, and looking.
You know, it's that hidden.
Child, yeah.
Yeah.
Right. Barbara, and if I can just add to Natalie's point, I, you know, I agree with both of you. A lot of times, children that are not on our radar are struggling right now. And so, we are relying heavily on the teachers who are in constant communication with those students and making sure that they have the support that they need. They're communicating that, like Natalie said, with the clinicians and also with the building administrators.
And don't forget, we have our monitors and TAs. We have our monitors calling all of our students who aren't handing in work to see what's going on, checking in on them, having our TAs run lots of different groups supporting students. For the TAs that were already in classrooms and know the curriculum, we have them working in small groups with students, having them making phone calls for all these students who might be missing assignments, who, you know, who weren't necessarily on our radar to begin with, and asking, you know, to dig a little bit deeper and what's going on? Do you need help? What kind of help do you need? And so, we have a lot of that. Each building principal really has worked closely with the faculty and trying to stay on top of it. But there certainly are students that were not on our radar before who are on our radar now.
And there's a way of passing that information forward to next year's teachers. So, it doesn't end with the teacher this year who's been dealing with that.
True.
But, you know.
Correct. And I think that that's one of the things that when we start to talk about our reentry task force, I think that that will be definitely one of the subgroups.
Okay.
Make sure we have that student support in place.
With just social emotional learning in general or social emotional needs addressing should be a subgroup.
It is. It's one of the identified subgroups.
Yeah.
That's okay. Okay. All right, is there anything else from any for the on the board? I just want you.
I just wanted to ask a question. I haven't been on the middle school, high school campus in probably about five weeks. And I visited and got a quick tour of the Capitol project. I just wanted to ask if there is anything to update. I know that with the buildings being closed and school not being actually on campus, that made it easier to streamline some of the work. I do want to ask if we've been able to anticipate supply stream issues that might come into play in trying to get ahead of the game, but the supply stream being a little bit lagging.
Sure. So, we're certainly ahead of schedule. I mean, at the middle school, really, almost none of this work was scheduled to begin until next week and the beginning of June, when we were going to displace the students from the cafeteria and into the gym. So, they got a tremendous head start on the work that's being done in that building. And maybe the silver lining of the work is that we were really anxious about their ability to get everything done in that building and be ready to open in September. And now, there's a much greater sense of comfort in their ability to complete all of that work and have that school ready to open in September. So, that is certainly the case. There was other sort of cost-saving factors of not needing to mobilize so many times, not needing to put up as many temporary partitions, and all of those type of expenses. So, we sort of, we're definitely ahead of schedule, and we're continuing to be on budget. So, those are both good signs. I'm not saying that I wouldn't kick them all out tomorrow if we can reopen our schools, although I'm not sure the middle school, the middle school is beyond the point of reopening at this point. But it's, we're anxious to see it all done and be ready for when our students return in the fall.
But specifically because we didn't anticipate the timing for getting supplies, for getting equipment?
Yeah. Sorry, I forgot that part. So, we do, we have, there's weekly calls with the contractors, and myself and Mr. Spittle are on. Those long lead time items are often discussed in terms of once the submittals are approved by the architects to make sure that those items are ordered. I think the longest lead time item I had heard of is something called an energy recovery unit. So, and that allows the HVAC to operate more efficiently at the middle school. I think that was the largest lead time item, which is scheduled to get in right at the end of the summer. But it's not, the building could open without it. The HVAC would operate without it. It just would be less efficient, and they would be able to slide that in. My biggest fear was the steel, the lead time on steel. But that doesn't seem to be an issue right now. In conversations we've had with our general contractor, they believe they'll be able to get the steel needed on site. Because the Health and Wellness Center is so far ahead of schedule, they can pause on that work to give the steel time to arrive while they focus on the middle school, which is obviously the time, the more time pressing of the two. The Health and Wellness Center wasn't scheduled to be completed until January anyway. So, there's obviously no adverse effect on students in the high school if that work continues after the opening of school. So, we think that the contractors are responding to the needs, the supply chain needs, and finding ways to procure what they need. And we have not yet heard of anything that would now delay the project off of its anticipated timeline.
Secondarily, just before we adopted the total parameters of the project, there was all this concern because the economy was churning and we worry about steel prices going through the roof and wondering, without having so much competition, if our steel prices have kind of self-regulated and we kind of escaped some of that.
So, it wouldn't be our contracts with the contractors. So, really, they're on the hook for any escalation in costs or savings in costs. So, I don't know exactly what they will, they'll be purchasing the equipment at, I mean, the materials that. My sense is with the, with the construction being shut down and across many industries, that there's probably a surplus of product, which would certainly drive down the costs. But again, those costs would not be realized by the district. Whatever the escalation or the savings would be, would fall on the contractors who have signed contracts already.
All right, Dr. Love, I just want to close by thanking you and acknowledging you for your leadership during this time. This is a very emotional, I hate, I keep hearing unprecedented times. You know, we've heard all of the, you know, the emotions of parents. Some parents, out of their disappointment, I want a graduation no matter what. Other parents, out of their fear, I don't want a graduation no matter what. It is very easy to make decisions and lead by emotion during this time. And I think you have worked very hard with all of your staff to make decisions that are best for students and safety. So, I actually just ask all of our community members, let's make those decisions. Let's try to put those emotions to the side and make healthy, safe decisions for all of our students, any way that we can.
I appreciate that. And I want it to be noted, I mean, my heart pours out for those high school seniors. And I can't even imagine what it's like to essentially miss your entire spring semester. And as someone who played sports growing up, I would have been devastated missing my senior year of baseball. So, it's, there are many lasts that these students were essentially robbed of. And I feel terrible about it. And if there was any way for me to give them those experiences back, I would gladly do so. It's just, we're in a situation where that's not going to be permissible. It's, the state will never allow it. The Department of Health is telling us not to. And it's, I understand the emotion. I'm emotional about it as well. It's, everybody wants the best for their kids. And it's, there's a sense that it's not fair for these students because they're being robbed of all these milestone events. And there's a lot of truth to that. It's just, it's the unfortunate situation that we're in. And we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of all students. And I do my best to make those decisions void of emotion, but I always make those decisions thinking about the best interest of the child. And that's what we've tried to do all year. It's what, as an administrative team, we go back to every time tough decisions need to be made. We try to focus on what's best for the students. And that was sort of, that will continue to be our guiding principles as we continue through this crisis and hopefully on to the reopening of schools next year, is to make decisions that are in the best interest for all children. So, it certainly is a team effort. And I should recognize all of my colleagues and the board for being as supportive as you have all been throughout this. No one anticipated this at the beginning of the year. This was certainly not how I imagined my first year as superintendent going. It terrifies me to think that my second year may not start much better. But we're going to continue to do the best we can do to educate the students in Putnam Valley and to get through this as safely as we possibly can.
And to remind our seniors and fourth graders and eighth graders, but especially our seniors, that no one can rob them of their accomplishments because those lasts didn't happen. Mark for us, I know it's not, it's an empty consolation, but please, it is, it is important to realize that you were such an important member of our community for the 13 years you were here. And that can never be taken away from any of them. Yeah. Okay.
So, I have additional question. We are still on for a meeting on June 4th, correct?
Correct. So, our June 4th meeting will also include our, include our tenure recipients and our retiree celebrations.
Okay.
There'll be more information coming out. Those individuals will be invited to join the meeting. Our principals and directors will be able to say a few things about our retirees and our tenure recipients. And unfortunately, we will not be able to have an in-person ceremony. It doesn't seem that long ago where we deleted, hoping we would be able to meet in person. And now, that seems almost laughable. But we will do it virtually on June 4th, which is next Thursday. And be sure to recognize those teachers and employees who are moving on to bigger, better things, or for those who receive tenure.
And for people who are expecting to hear something about the budget on the 4th prior to the vote being due on the 9th, your vote will probably not get counted if you wait till that meeting to hear anything and try and put something in the mail the next day. Probably not get to the district. So, make your choices prior to that time. So, time is of the essence, folks.
Sounds like wise advice.
Very wise, Mr. Faro. All right. I'd like now a recommendation or resolution to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Be safe and be well, everyone.
Okay.
Yeah, have a good night.
Goodbye.
Good night.
Good night.